Good evening and welcome to the November 2023 meeting of the Penfield Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us. This is a public meeting and is being broadcasted on Penfield Public Broadcast and is also available on YouTube after the meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda? Naraj, Judy seconds, all in favor? With that, we'll go first item of this first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of last month's minutes and the finance reports. We'll do the minutes first. Do I have a motion to approve those? Naraj, you have a second. Jennifer, all in favor? Perfect. And Naraj, would you like to go over the finance report?
Sure. Today is November 21st. We have the monthly budget summary through October, so that's 10 months out of 12 months. That's about 83%. I double check with my older son. And where are we coming in? We're coming in at around 73%. So that's 10% better overall. Where is that better variance coming from? Largely, it's the contractuals. We're significantly better on that. That's less controlled, but it's amazing, 25% better over there. Still 13% better on material, so we have money to spend on books and stuff. Wages is more in line, about 5% better, so good job, everybody. We're looking to come in strong and under budget for the year end. The monthly balance sheet, everything looks fine on the operating side. The gifted memorial fund, the one thing that I did want to mention, and I spoke to library staff about it, that the Canadago National Bank and Trust, that number should be closer to about $42,000 because if you recall, the Canadago National Bank and Trust, CD matured and we moved it over to Family First. A couple things, now that we're talking about bank accounts, that happened, a lot of things actually happened this past month. A couple CDs, the board approved that we're not going to renew a couple CDs, if you recall. So there were two CDs that came to maturity. We decided not to renew them. And so that left us in Family First about $74,000 in money market in our Money Builders and about $15,000 in checking after we didn't renew those CDs. I'd like to, that's still a lot of cash. We were hoping for liquidity. We got that. But I'd like to put just a small amount, maybe like $20,000 in a short-term CD, maybe six-month or promo. I asked them, they do have a promo rate at that time of about 5% or so, and that would be a lot better than our money market afterwards. If I can get a motion for that, that would be cool. The Canadago National Bank, I also followed through with doing an early withdrawal for that $42,000 CD and re- and upping the interest rate, kind of like starting another one. What I did at that time also was I opened up a savings account with a nominal $500. That way, we're not in a pickle, I guess, that's what it's called, when we don't have checking or savings account and a CD that matures, so we have a place to park it. Let me see if there's anything else that I need to talk about. I don't think so. Could we have a motion of the finance report that I presented, please? I mean, a motion to approve?
Jennifer, second. Anna, all in favor? Then Naraj, you needed a motion for?
Yeah, and so then, can I have a second? Motion for moving $20,000 from the Money Builders account in Family First to a CD at a promo rate and just for short-term. Can we get that?
Jason, second. Judy, all in favor? Perfect.
That's it.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Naraj. With that, doesn't appear to be any public participation. We'll go on to the next item on our agenda here, which is Linda Cole, our liaison report for the town.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot. We have our last meeting is the Town Board on December 6th. And the one public hearing taking place is about the hunting map. There's a map about expansion to where it is right now. And that's, you know, that's just a regular agenda. We have December 1st is the lighting of the tree. If you saw the tree, it's up already, this big 30-foot artificial tree that's been put in the four corners. And on December 1st, Supervisor Draw will light it and have a little ceremony. And the Penfield Business Chamber is going to come out with hot chocolate and candy canes. So if you want to come out to that, you know. December 9th is the holiday celebration for the kids at the community center. I look at you, it's really you. I'm thinking of people with little kids now. Yeah, so that'll be fun. And as you know, Debbie and I are leaving, so they're going to have a little coffee and cookies for us on December 6th, if you want to come over at 5:30. We're going to be out in the real town for that.
Nice.
I don't know. That's about all I have. Unless you have some questions, I can investigate.
Anything that I could think of. Does anyone else have any questions for Linda?
I don't think so.
Well, Lita, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. We'll go on to our next liaison report. Judy, representing the Friends of Penfield Public Library.
The Friends didn't really have too much. They really, this is kind of their slow time. They are very actively looking for somebody to take over the September book sale. They don't have anyone either to run it nor to assist in running it. So they've asked us as a board if we have any recommendations or know anybody that they could possibly touch base with and see if they're willing to take on this job and get trained for it. So that's basically, they're still working on a succession plan for how that's going to work now that they have, you know, more participants and more members. But their real, their real problem is, their real challenge, I should say, is getting somebody to run that, the book sale in September. So, anybody have any suggestions or ideas that, you know, they might pursue? I don't know.
I mean, one thing that comes to mind if they're not able to find a volunteer is, you know, do you start outsourcing that by potentially doing like one of those estate sale companies and having them come in to run it? And obviously, you pay them a percentage, but if you can't find the proper volunteers, then you cut into your profits a little bit.
And I don't know if they've thought of that. I think they would rather not, of course, do that. But that is an op, I mean, that is a possibility.
What about like the Girl Scout troop or something like Millwield? Is Penfield Girl Scouts? Something like that? Maybe some of the older troops might, they might be interested in doing it for, they probably could get some sort of an award for doing that.
It's not really that kind of job. They could certainly volunteer during the sale and be involved that way, but it's a management job. I mean, they're working months ahead of time, scheduling volunteers and planning the placement of the tables. You'd really have to understand the sale very well, you know, to do it.
You have to advertise, you know, in the, in the program for, well, have the library have a program, and it could be run by some of the leadership there. And advertise as such, would you like to get involved in the ins and outs of running the book sale, what it takes, and we're looking for volunteers, you know? Something like that, maybe, you know, when you advertise it out to the public, maybe some of those public that like to go to the book sale might say, you know, it's winter time and everything, have it something like February or something. You know, would you be interested in participating? It could be, you might grab some volunteers anyway, but, you know, the fact that they need leadership, it could be an advertisement or call to volunteers.
Could be.
Put it up, you know, put it up on a little screen as you walk in and have it as a program. I don't know. I mean, that's a way to look for volunteers. I just, you know, think about things that way before I go to the, what you're saying, which is, it's a good idea, but I know how they think. You'd rather do a volunteer, you make more money that way.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, it's, and then it's, it's still in their hands, kind of thing, you know? I was at the museum bazaar this past weekend. And at the, yeah, as you were. And two people came up and asked where their book sale was. Now, a long time ago, they used to have a book sale in the lower level of the museum. And I, and I said, well, you know, I said, but I know where you can go for a really good book sale. And they said, we know, the Penfield Library. We've already been there. And we like that library and their book sale. That's one of the best. I should have said, yeah, well, they're looking for somebody to run it. Are you interested? But anyway, so yeah, it goes beyond just the town of Penfield evidently.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I will definitely suggest that to them, to advertise, you know, library on the board or.
Well, could be a priority, the leadership, you know? Maybe the outgoing organizers or the president and somebody could run the meeting.
Yeah, have like an open call for people who might be interested in, or something and have.
Well, if they understand what it's about, it may not, you know, a lot of people just think this is, it just happens, you know? They don't think that there's, it's the same people. I think it's the ongoing, because you see the same people. When you go to the book sale, right, you think, oh, that's just running perfectly and all that. You don't realize.
And if they have like a timeline and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Then they could understand what they are, they could understand what needs to be done and when to see if it's possible.
Yeah. They have a good management approach. They just, you know, need some people. So they could, maybe they could just have a coffee hour, I don't know, and say, anybody, you know?
It works.
We're looking for volunteers or we're looking for the management part of that. Those are good ideas.
And is it something that there could be like co-managers?
Yes, I think that's what they're looking.
Okay.
They've been doing that, hasn't it?
They have, but it's been.
No, they've found two people.
It's been these, you know, these core people that have been doing it, who are ready to say.
Because I think advertising it as a co would be a lot easier to find somebody to do it than just.
It definitely is.
Here you go.
Have it all.
Right. All right. Well, that's about all I have, but those were good ideas, so I will pass it on to them. They're very open to, you know, any suggestions that we have, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Judy. With that, we'll go on to the next item here on the agenda, our new addition here, the Penfield Public Library Foundation Liaison Report with Naraj.
So this is a new item on the agenda, the Penfield Public Library Foundation. What I'm doing is I'm communicating between our board and the foundation. So the foundation, I did get communication from them. They had their fifth wine tasting fundraiser on November 4th, and 28 people attended, the best ever for the foundation, so it's good. Another one is scheduled for the spring. That's the main thing. They want to remind the public that the foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization and donates to the Penfield Public Library exclusively. If anybody else wants me to communicate something to the foundation, then please let me know and I will.
Do they have a meeting, Naraj?
No, we're doing this through email.
Ah, okay.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Naraj. We'll go through the committee reports here. I don't think there's anything but, Naraj, anything for the finance report?
No, I think I did that before.
Yep. We'll go on to the personnel. Anna?
Yeah, so Judy has decided to re-up for next year, and she's going to serve a term from January 2024 to December 31st, 2028. We're going to vote on that next month. But I also want to bring up a new trustee procedure, and I'd like to have something that says, should a trustee accept a second term in a year when no other openings exist, the personnel chair person should serve as committee chairperson and make the recommendation to full board. So if anybody has any questions on that or comments?
Have we done something different in the past?
Not.
Not in my time. I don't know. But this is what you approved last month. And so since we don't, I mean, I think we've discussed that we would love to have Judy back. There's not really much discussion, really. And she's happy to come back.
I'm old enough to be the grandmother of this room.
So this month is just to discuss the recommendation that Anna is making, and if anybody had questions, now's the time to ask.
I think it's a good idea.
Perfect. I think it's a wonderful idea as well. Thank you so much, Anna. With that, we'll go on to strategic planning. Jennifer, anything we need to be worried about?
No, not this one.
All right. And Naraj, we're going to go back to you again for the bylaws. Anything that needs to be communicated?
Nothing.
All right. And then Judy, on to the communications and advocacy.
Pretty quiet.
No worries. Next item on the agenda is the director's report. Rhonda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So October, we did finish, as expected, all of the annual evaluations with all of our staff members, and that went well. Again, that's only the second time we've done that in recent history. So I think it does help with staff members to see how they're doing year after year and to talk about, you know, what their expectations had been last year and did they achieve those expectations and what are their new expectations. So things went very well during those discussions. I think they're helpful. The Bremen Room is completed. We did enclose a picture of the before and after. We are really quite happy with the results, especially with the kitchen. We just love the kitchen. Do you have any questions about these pictures or the room itself or the project?
Looks wonderful. Just for the sake of this being broadcasted, is the Bremen Room available to those who want to check it out or, you know?
It is now available for library programs, meetings, for our patrons to use for their own meetings, as long as they follow policy and apply it to Deanna. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have the first people using it this Saturday.
Oh, fun.
So, yes. We have chosen the chairs. We're waiting to get an estimate for that. We have chosen the tables. We're waiting to get an estimate for that. Once that is set, I'll send you the estimates and we'll decide if we're going to go forward with that. But I, we really wanted to get the carpeting and the wall color in place before we chose the rest of it. We were just concerned about it because things had changed along the way and we just wanted to make sure everything matched, so.
Yeah, it looks phenomenal.
We will have a ribbon cutting probably in the next few weeks.
Fun.
The Dave Thomas Donation Project continues. As you remember, Dave Thomas was one of our everyday patrons. His family has donated $10,000 to do something that would suit the library's mission as well as kind of fit what Dave Thomas enjoyed about the library. So I did bring a picture of what we're doing. We're going to do four brand-new, custom-made, kind of very comfy chairs. We bought newspaper racks because the newspapers are sort of hidden away and every day he would sit there and read the newspaper. So we're bringing the newspapers out again. I think probably somewhere along the way, I know there was a lot of conversation in library land that newspapers were disappearing and a lot of libraries kind of pushed them onto the edge, but that's not, that hasn't happened. People come in every single day to read the newspaper, so we're bringing them back out. We bought a small plaque to commemorate the Thomas family's donation, and we're going to get some of those chairs that you can kind of fit under the chair, so you can put your newspaper on there, a cup of coffee, whatever. So we're happy about this project and we're really very, very grateful for the generous donation. Any questions about that?
It looks nice.
Where is it, where is it going to be?
So if you walk straight down the library towards the DVDs, you'll see a little sitting area that, that's what we have now. It's five older chairs in a circle, and then the newspapers are totally out of view. So we'll bring the newspapers back into their area. We're going to take those five chairs and put them into corners where they're needed anyway, and we're going to put the new chairs out and just kind of make it a little more attractive for those newspaper users that, we do have quite, quite a few who don't buy the newspaper, whatever, and want to read at the library. So, and we'll get some new newspapers too, because this rack is very large.
Nice.
So that's, that's all good. Went to several meetings. Staff training day was really good this year. We had it on November 10th. We did a few new things. We had a technology petting zoo where we had some key staff members showing databases, the website, the copy machine, eBooks, because some of our staff members are very comfortable with technology and some of them are not. And we're all asked daily about this, these products, and we all want to feel comfortable answering those products. So actually, in the staff evaluation meetings, we had several conversations with staff members who are, their job responsibilities are not really related to these, to eBooks or maybe copy machines, but people ask them all the time because they see them as staff members. So they'll be walking by the copy machine and somebody will grab them, and they'll say, can you help me make a copy? And they don't like having to say, I don't know how. So now they can say, yes, I can, if, you know, the librarians are busy. So it was really good, actually. We saw a webinar on library safety. We, we were visited by the Friends and the foundation for about half an hour, and they talked about their missions and how they coincide with our mission. We had Michael Riddell of Empowering People's Independence on Seizure Recognition and Basic First Aid, and people loved this talk. He talked about epilepsy and how somebody who has a seizure might be having an epileptic seizure, but might be having a different kind of seizure, and how do you recognize what's happening and how do you just know when to call 911. Basically, we told staff, call 911 every time, but at least this time, you're a little more, I think staff feels a little more comfortable understanding what's happening and not being too frightened. Because when you're in the library and people are in there all the time, you just never know what's going to happen, and we don't want our staff members to panic.
Yeah.
Doesn't help. And then we did a team role-playing exercise. We took about 15 concerning possibilities, like somebody comes in and is doing a TikTok project. I'll call it a project, that's a nice way of saying it. How do you respond? Or somebody comes in and complains about a, maybe a book display, or somebody comes in and just keeps interrupting and being rude. So we put these all in a bucket and people pulled them out and we did, we just played it out. We had volunteers who came up there, acted it out, and Deanna was the funniest one. She played somebody who just kept interrupting. Her question was more important than anybody else's question. It was really funny.
I really needed that book.
And so what does a staff member do? How is that staff member polite to this person as well as the person they're already helping? So that was, it was a good day. It really was. Two people have been promoted. Congratulations to Lara and Miriam. Both are now senior clerks, very well deserved. I did go to Nyla, nobody else, none of the other librarians were able to go to Nyla because of the timing this year, but I'm really glad I went. I went to some great classes, and one of the classes I went to brought up, you know, something from, that I put on the policy about recorded and streamed live board meetings because I went to a class with Stephanie Cole Adams, and many of you have gone to webinars with Stephanie Cole Adams. She's just, she presents so well. She's a lawyer who specializes.
She's a fountain of information.
She really is. And at the, you know, she, she did like six or seven scenarios of what could happen in your library. None of them really applied to us, but they were very interesting. But at the end, she said, anybody who has a question, I haven't talked about, you know, stand online and I'll answer. And so I stood online and I asked her our question. So we'll talk about that later. So I'm really, I mean, Nyla is always worthwhile. I'm really hoping that next year, because it's in Syracuse, we'll be able to have several staff members go just for the day instead of an overnight. The overnight is hard for a lot of our staff members.
Yeah.
So hopefully, next year, we'll have more people. But other than that, everything is going very smoothly. The library is very, very, very busy, and things are good.
Does Nyla ever have a program that, for trustee kind of people, that would fulfill that requirement of two hours of education a year?
Yeah, and I sent you the Nyla listing. Yes, you can click on that and you can get recordings. Are you talking about the Nyla conference?
Well, the conference is what I was thinking.
There were, there actually probably, in that class with Stephanie Cole Adams, I'd say there were five trustees in that class. So trustees can go to conference if you're interested.
When is the Syracuse one?
It's a year from last November.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Rhonda? I know I have two.
Did you get some ideas for the tech in the libraries?
I was just going to ask that too, yeah.
Oh, are we missing anything? Were there any gaps?
Yeah, the tech meeting.
Every time you go to Nyla, you get ideas, yes.
Yeah.
And every time you go to Nyla, you see people who are just like very, very passionate about what they do. So yes, absolutely.
Were there one or two pieces of technology that you're hoping that we can potentially get in the future?
You know, I wouldn't say that we would do today.
Yeah.
But future, absolutely, yeah.
It's kind of that big.
And somebody asked me, I think it was Justin, asked us to do some TikTok recordings, so that's why I went to the TikTok one. Yeah, there's so much going on out there. A lot of it was about A1 and what's happening with libraries with A1, which is, I don't know.
Scary.
A little frightening.
AI.
AI, I'm sorry, AI.
I was just like, oh, is that something new?
Right. Yes, AI.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering where you were going. It's like, oh, what's our approach?
There's a lot, there's a lot about.
AI going through and implemented somewhere, so.
Yeah. Now, last year, I went at Nyla, I went to a class before AI, sorry, was talked about so much. I went to a class on the dark web, and so much of that class was brought up in this class, which was very interesting.
Interesting. I saw you attended the designing community-centered libraries. Any resources or, you know, can you talk a little bit more about that?
It was, that one was, over the years, I have seen, I guess, waves of innovation where you'll see libraries are being built with fewer and fewer books. And their example this year was this library that was almost like a raised ranch. You walk up a few stairs and you saw all the books and all the tables, and you walk down a few stairs and they had all their program meeting spaces down there. So the example they mostly talked about at that class was where they basically flipped it. So they're showing the top with no books at all, and they don't even talk about the lower level. All of us, all the librarians in the room, I could see them looking at each other like, where are the books? Because there were no books to speak of. It was beautiful, beautiful windows and beautiful tables and a stage and just great meeting space, great program space, but finally, somebody raised her hand and said, where are the books? And they said, we put them in the basement. And my heart just sunk.
A great place for books.
Well, I don't know, you know, I mean, I, that, that seems to be a movement right now, and that's what that person, that presenter was, was really talking about, making it a community space as well as a library, but the library was kind of.
Hidden.
You know, I feel like there's got to be some sort of compromise that I think people expect to see, the books, when they come in.
Isn't there a Nyla webinar, and I think I signed up for it in December, and it's about construction and about renovating or new library or, you know, where the money is going to come from and how do you apply for that? So.
In my past job, I did four library construction grants, so I have experience doing it, but when we go for our renovation or new building, which I hope will come up in five or six years, as, as the Town Capital Improvement Plan indicates, you know, according to the system, we will get probably close to $1 million added that grant if we write it correctly, but we need so much more than that. So we do need town support.
Okay. Any other questions for Rhonda's staff director's report? All right. There's no unfinished business from last meeting. Rhonda, thank you so much.
Sure.
We'll go on to new business, policy and document reviews. I believe Justin was going to lead this. Naraj, are you comfortable discussing this? Okay. We will postpone that till next month. Is that okay?
Oh, I can speak to it if you like.
Yeah, it's fine.
Or we can postpone, whatever you choose.
I think it's fine.
We talked about them last week, so today was just for you to reread it and make sure everything was okay. And if you have any questions, obviously, I can answer them, but last, we, Justin presented them.
Yes.
So this, last month.
Just voting.
And so today, it's simply a vote, unless you have concerns or questions about the three. So the first one is a policy, the general finance and budget policy, where we simply cleaned it up and took out all of the procedure, basically. policy, where we simply cleaned it up and took out all of the procedure, basically. If we approve this, then we have two policies to write in the upcoming months, the credit card use policy, which I think we should have anyway, and the petty cash policy. So we will start writing that if this is approved. And other than that, you know, everything is, is basically what it was. We just pulled the procedure out and left the policy.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the, oh, are there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the general finance and budget policy as it is presented? Jennifer, you first, Niraj seconds. All in favor? Perfect. Over to the ethics statement.
And this, we didn't change at all, nothing. We just fixed a few grammatical errors. So exactly the same.
Any questions for Rhonda? No. Do I have a motion to approve? Jason, Judy, you second. All in favor? And then the last one, succession plan?
And this is if, you know, for whatever reason, I am no longer able to be the director for whatever reason, and you don't have time to get a new director. This is what would happen in the interim. So we, again, it's basically what you did when you needed to find interim director last time, when you had Sally Snow. It's a basic thing. We put it in a different order, and we made sure that any specifics were taken out. The last planning actually had like an actual employee listed who's no longer an employee. So we took anything specific out and made everything generic so that you'd know what to do. But other than that, it's the same.
Any questions for Rhonda on this?
How many clerk twos are there? One? No. I thought in the plan.
Office clerk two.
We have, yeah, office clerk two, there's just one, and then we have the library clerks.
Right. But she's the one listed because she knows all of, she handles most of the HR in the building, and then she's supported by the town HR. But she knows more than anybody else.
Yeah, I just liked that it was listed by the role, and I was like, oh, I wonder how many we have.
Just the one.
Just one.
Makes it easy for succession plan.
Right. We have several librarian twos, though, for you to choose from, should that come up.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the succession plan as it was presented? Niraj first, Jennifer you second, all in favor? Perfect. With that, Rhonda, I know you kind of highlighted this earlier in the Director's Report, but recorded streamed live board meetings.
So when I was waiting online for Stephanie Cole Adams, the attorney who works in Buffalo but talks, but helps libraries around the state, my question was, and this has come up several times in my year and a half with you, do we need to follow town policy and record and stream our meetings? And she said, no, we don't. That's our choice. She did say, though, that the way we're doing it now is not correct, because we are not a library, we are not a town department, we are separate. So if the meeting is being recorded, the library itself has to have the recording on hand for perpetuity. So all of the recordings that are on YouTube or in the, at the town, that's not enough. Those recordings have to be in the library so that if a patient walked in and said, I want to see the recording on January 19th, 2023, we should, we have to have it, just like we have to have the minutes available. If anybody walked in and said, I want to see those minutes, we have to have them. So the fact that the town does it for us is, we would have to fix that if we chose to. So the question is, I know a lot of trustees really want to go back to the library to have an in-person meeting, which is in accordance with the open meeting law, because anybody is welcome to come. We can do that. If you want to, if you want me to figure out the recording so that we have it, we can do that. And that's for the board to decide.
Yeah, I'm strongly in favor not televising it. I saw, I was around when it wasn't recorded. It was convenient. There was, and as an attorney, I understand notice, right? You're giving enough notice. If people want to come, then they can certainly come. The Bremen Room or wherever it's held, it's open. The minutes are recorded still, so there's no transparency issues. It just functioned a lot smoother, I think, a lot smoother. There was staff available. Let's say if we wanted to pull in staff, let's say if the director wanted to bring in a sample or something. We had much more of camaraderie there, because we, sometimes, let's say if you were talking about the furniture, hey, let's step out and look at that. So right now, we're televised here, we're kind of removed. I think when it was onsite, especially, not record, well, it was onsite, the staff also saw the board involved a little bit more. So it's not like somebody's over somebody else, like in hierarchy or anything. It's just more like, I think the conversations were better, too. Because when anyone's on camera, it's, it's just a different environment, I think. That's my take. I strongly approve, I mean, I strongly support anything that we can do to not televise these.
Judy, are you gonna say something?
Well, I support that, what Niraj just said. I think these meetings tend to be very formalized, and so there's some kind of very careful stilted conversation that happens, because I don't, and I, I think our camaraderie as a group suffers because of that. So I agree that, you know, I, I attended another, was there another one that I attended on a webinar? I think you attended the same one, which really said the same thing. But then, you know, to get it official, I think, makes it much more doable for us. Not that we dislike the town or anything, but I, I think if people want to come. Now, but how would we, if somebody comes in then and says, I want to see the meetings from July, or July 24, is that recorded? Is that just minutes that you would hold on to?
Open meetings law does not require recordings at all. So if we don't have a recording, then there's nothing for them to request. But since we did have recordings for these three-plus years, we have to have them.
And when I, and I remember when we were, when I was researching other, like how other libraries function, other board meetings function, if somebody wants to ever go back, and I did, I would just go and I would say, can I see your minutes? And you just go right through it. You can have an idea of what's going on. And again, you're giving notice, proper notice, proper legal notice. You don't have to go above and beyond. That's the standard.
I know other libraries that I spoke with, because I kind of did a search, the same kind of thing, they, they are not televised like this. And they were kind of surprised or taken aback by the fact that, you know, we are, yes, we are, we definitely want that, that interaction, and we want to be open to everything. But I don't know.
And I think we need to also go back to what we've tried to do over the past year as the boards have kind of evolved, right? One of the things was kind of the relationship between the director and the staff, and also, if you remember, it was between the board and the staff and the board and the director, the board. And if we're going along with that, then this just makes a lot more sense. Before, we weren't having staff meetings that much. Like, why was that? Now, we're trying to get everything together. So I think this, this just makes a lot sense. I think the other argument, to play devil's advocate, I think some people think that, hey, if you're on TV, you're doing more for the community. You're not doing more for the community if the library's not functioning as well. Like, would you want the board to function well? Would you want the operations of the library to function as well? Or do you just get your, like, you just, you just get an ego boost to say, hey, I'm watching a YouTube video. If you, if you care so much about the library, then come in. Nobody's stopping you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd love to see, you know, a real person, or people.
For all those people that want to have it, where are you?
Is there any indication, because I know you have mentioned before about some of our librarians will watch the meetings. Is that something that's popular? Because I would hate to move it somewhere else, and then the people that our decisions are affecting don't know what we're doing other than when the minutes are.
But open meetings law, anybody can come.
That's true.
Yeah. I was gonna ask if there was any data with numbers of how many people view the.
So when, when I used to look at this data, it was back during the pandemic, and we did all these recorded programs, and you would put something up on YouTube or some other station. And back then, and I don't know if it's changed, literally, if somebody was like scrolling through their Facebook and they saw five, 10 seconds of something, we got the credit. And that's why those numbers were so inflated in the beginning of the pandemic. We had tons and tons and tons of minutes of recorded, but really, they were watching for 15 seconds, and then they were going on. So I think it's, I don't, I don't want to say for a fact how the town is counting their ratings, because I don't know how the town is doing that. But I see it all the time on my Facebook, and I look at it, and I, for a second, and I keep going, and I see the stat go up. So are they watching the whole meeting?
They're just watching Brett's introduction.
Right.
Library next.
Forget it.
Actually, it's me logging in like 20 million times.
Because we have such riveting meetings.
I do have two thoughts here. Like, I remember as a board member myself, for the first time, I went to the library, actually, for the first meeting, when we're supposed to get, it was strange that we weren't meeting at the place that we were, you know, kind of helping, you know?
We're associated with the library.
To give idea, or, you know, anything like that. And I know there's not a way to have these recorded in the library, from my understanding, because we don't have this set up there.
Right.
The only thing that I could see with the recording here that is nice is, you know, kind of piggybacking off Niraj's, you know, thought there is, you know, when we talk about, you know, the Friends of the library or the Foundation, making sure, you know, what's the point of having those liaison reports, was making sure people were aware of those publicly, because sometimes they can get lost. Again, we can't, we don't have any data to say, yeah, this is working for them or helping them with their book sales. So it's one thing, if there's any, you know, if it helps a little bit, a little bit's better than not helping at all, right? Especially with, you know, some of our partners that are struggling in areas where they do need a little bit more public, you know, notice. So it'd be my only dilemma in potentially not having these recordings. But it sounds like, no matter what, we're going to have to facilitate having these recordings available, because for the last three years, we have had them. So I, you know, either way, we're gonna have to have that solution. It's just a matter of kind of going forward, what we're gonna be doing.
Do they keep it all like on, in, on one disc or something?
You can get it.
Yeah, I can get it. I don't know how to get it, but I can figure it out.
Old beta tips.
How does, how do they keep it on discs?
Well, they keep, they could be, they used to. I'm not sure. I can't.
I imagine.
Get that on my.
It was on.
I think even, even our discussion tonight about the Bremen Room and, you know, it would be really, it would have been nice to be able to walk right out of the meeting and walk right, and see it in person, instead of seeing the pictures that you sent, you know. And I know that we can all go there. Like, I mean, we go, we all go to the library, right? But to all be together and see it and stuff, it's hard to come up with a time to say, let's all meet at the library to look at this section, to see what we would like to do to change it.
Right.
But we're all together once a month, so it would be nice to be at the library.
And even like, just, I remember when it wasn't recorded, it was just a more light-headed, like, we were just lighter, whether it was in the meeting or outside of the meeting. We would just walk in the library, and it was our chance. I mean, everybody knew it's a board meeting. Everybody knew that it was a board meeting, right? So everybody would say, hey, hi, or whatever, and it's a chance to kind of interact. Linda used to have her meetings onsite. We used to.
The chat.
Yeah, the chat. It was, it was a beautiful thing. It was really a beautiful thing. And when you separate yourself, you got to think about how much benefit are you getting with publicizing, I mean, for the three people maybe that view it, and to have a less rapport? I think, I think you lose a lot in rapport, like within our board, too.
Rhonda, would you be able to work with the town to get any data as to how they are calculating?
I can get that for next month, and then we can continue the discussion.
Yeah.
Do we know how many, how many people watched this?
Yes.
I know some probably meetings are more exciting than others, but, but I'm just curious. I looked once, and I saw four people had watched one of our meetings. And I think one of them was my husband, but I'm not sure. And so, you know, I'm just curious what that, what that would be. Or even, you know, the, I don't know, what do you call the board when you, the, the screen that when you come into the library advertises what's going on? Is that an opportunity right there, just to say, put it up there and say, there's a, you know, trustee meeting tonight, all are welcome in the Bremen Room or wherever we meet? That's an opportunity to at least open, or, you know, tell people, join us?
Put it on the website, things like that, like on account?
It's on the website.
Yeah. And you're, like you said, Niraj, you're giving plenty of notice?
You're giving a lot of notice. And honestly, if you think outside the box, then we can, I mean, if, if people are worried about we're not communicating something over there, and they have to look at, my God, they have to look in the minutes to figure it out that we talked about the Friends. That's what they're supposed to do, right? But if you really want to take it above, you can have, just like they have a TV for library programs, we can have a board TV, like just a board TV, right?
Right.
And it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a commercial.
Right.
But let's say if, so it's not the library promoting it. Well, this is the liaison, the liaison report from the Foundation, right? And, okay, wine tasting, whatever, happened really well. So not only did we discuss it, but I guarantee you, there's gonna be more eyeballs on that TV than any of this recording. And it's gonna be more significant.
Quicker.
Because it's going there saying that, okay, you have a Friends liaison, so then you just have one little thing that stays there for 10 seconds, saying that the book sale is coming here. And maybe it's also something that says that, you know what, you're helping the programs, so it's also advertising that the Friends are publicizing this. The Foundation, they were just very happy that they wanted to remind them that, hey, we donate specifically to the library, right? So that's just another, that's the only thing that they want to communicate, really. So there's different ways to get, get there. That's all I'm saying.
I feel like I'm playing a little bit of catch-up here. So has the town required us to do it this way?
I wouldn't say required, but they have.
It's from above. It was the state when.
Well, it started during the pandemic.
And there was that understanding that all the boards, the, were to be televised, because people couldn't get out, the whole Zoom thing and all that. And it continued on, and there's been discussion amongst.
A lot of discussion.
You know, but nothing's really come about. But what you're saying, there's an out for the library, because the library is separate from the town. So you're in a different situation than, you know, the Town Board, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, always been, as soon as we started doing televised programs, it's always been, you know. But these other ones weren't, you know, Historic Preservation Board, they never wanted to. They were in the supervisor's room. Parks and Rec Board, they used to be over at the Parks and Rec, and then during COVID, they didn't exist, but now they're back and they're here, you know. They can't be over there, back there, because there's no ability to televise in the community center, so.
We did try to.
I'm not sure, but you're different. You're different. You're separate.
Right. We are, I don't know.
I would just have.
Of the town, but not in the town. Somebody explained it to me that way.
We're a municipal library supported by the town of Penfield, but we're not a department of the town of Penfield.
That's our own.
And I would advise you to talk to Pete Wyshar, the town attorney, because he's the one that deals with the state and what they're saying, you know, and.
Well, I know for sure, 100%.
Yeah, I know, but just go through.
Because every other library.
Just be clear to the whole, and then he can pass it on to the rest.
Yeah. So it's not like we'll get some information, you'll follow Rhonda, and then maybe we'll potentially talk, we'll talk about it again next month, and then at best-case near, we could potentially make a decision as a board in January about February's meeting and kind of going forward.
Okay, so I'm going to find out how they calculate their data, how many people have been watching, how we can get those recordings for our own possession.
And how much, how many days' notice do we have to give? So if we have a vote in December, if we have the approval from the board to go ahead without recordings, then we should know how much notice we're giving, and we can give that notice right away, and we can start the January term without it. It's not a best-case February, because if we actually have a discussion, and we know that the notice is there, and we give the notice on the website, get, get, I'd like to know how many days and what proper notice is.
Do we potentially want to take a vote in January?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you want me to speak to the town attorney?
Or December. I mean, who knows? We can make a vote in December, too.
I think it's.
Like, if you have everything, why not? Why, why, if you have all the stuff, if we have quorum, right? If you have all the, that's what this whole televised thing is, right? So we're going back and forth. So. So you have the data, we have the voices, we say, okay, let's run with it. How much notice do we need to give? 20 days? Okay, let's vote, put the notice in tomorrow, and start the non-televised in January. We can start it clean, we can say, you know what?
Oh, January begins.
In 2024, we started Bremen Room, with the new Bremen Room.
You just advertise that way on the website, and it's not like that, where now it says, we're just have it now back at the Bremen Room.
Yeah, and I, I really argue that I don't think we're going to get any opposition from anyone. I don't, I don't think anything's going to happen.
So would you like me to talk to the town attorney about this, or do you want me just to stay with what Stephanie Cole Adams did?
Yeah, you had, you got the information, right?
From an attorney, right? I advise.
Nothing wrong with getting their intention. Hey, our intention is to go back to the library in '24.
We're planning to vote on this in December.
Yeah, let's plan on it.
And new supervisor is coming in in January, let's not forget that.
Yeah.
So do you want to?
Let's do it before.
Okay.
No, let's do it before. If the supervisor wants to, honestly, like if the supervisor wants to say, hey, this is not how it's done, then they know that it's the supervisors that's calling the shots, it's not the board.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
It does seem like it's something, if, if for some reason there's a challenge, you know, at the library, and there's a missing piece of technology, then we could hunt that down. There is technology out there now that you could plug and play.
Right. If you. If you do want to keep the recording at the library, there's probably a way to do that, I'm sure there is. I, I don't know how you feel about that, is that like?
Where's it going to be, who's going to watch it? I mean, it's not done through CCTV, you know?
They would just have to be on us to do it.
Like on YouTube or something?
Right.
A whole different, yeah.
I don't think it's us. Unless our numbers, unless the numbers show that there are a lot of people watching it, and it's, and it's necessary, and we know that we are, it's, that we don't have to do it legally, then I think that we should make, be able to make that decision.
And I also think that it would be better if people came in person to give opinions and things like that, rather than just watching the recording or.
Because they don't, they can't ask us questions, like, it's not Zoom anymore, right? So they're not asking us questions through there, so public participation, they have to be here anyway, right? They're just not, so.
I mean, the neat thing too, for having it in the Bremen Room, for example, we can even have a sign made that just, you know, outside the door, you know?
Right, join us.
Join us, if you're like, public participation.
Did we have the meetings in the Bremen Room or the conference room? Bremen Room?
Yeah, those are awesome.
Might as well use the new space, right?
Would that cause a problem though, or there?
No, I'd love it, it would be wonderful.
I didn't know if there's events that happen on Tuesday.
Sounds good. It's a much more public, open space than the conference room.
Yeah. The only time when we never used the Bremen Room was when the summer reading was, like taking that space, then we would just meet in the conference. But by default, it was on, always in the Bremen, it was perfect.
Sounds good.
Awesome. We got a big vote coming up next, December.
We made some progress.
Awesome. Rhonda, thank you so much.
Yes, of course.
With that, we'll move on to the last item here, claims payment.
Oh, before we do that, the capital improvement project?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So we've had contractors come in to talk about the paint, and I believe that was approved by Town Board, and that's coming out of the Town General Fund. So we don't have to worry about that, the town is paying for the painting, and that's fantastic. We expect it to happen early January. So right now, we're talking to the contractor, looking at colors, trying to figure out what's going to be painted, it's all good. Basically, most of the building. The carpet will follow, and the carpet will be paid out of our fund balance up to $225,000. And because it's coming out of our fund balance, we should vote on the use of our own fund, it's our, it's our fund balance, it's a library fund, so it's not a town line. So I think it's important that we indicate that we have approved the use of those funds for this project. The carpet will be, will cost up to $225,000 out of our balance, and if it costs more, which we don't have final numbers, then the town is telling me that they will take anything above, they will pay for. And that's all new carpeting throughout the building, other than the storage rooms.
Okay. Are we worried about, I know with the Bremen Room, as they were removing carpet, they ran into some problem with the asbestos, are we worried about that at all?
Absolutely, and we've had staff, facilities, personnel, you know, lifting pieces of carpet so far, they haven't seen anything, but they did the same thing for the Bremen Room and didn't see it. So we might be surprised by that, we might have to have abatement, but still our, we will not go above $225,000, anything above that, the town will take care of.
So did they take care of the abatement in the Bremen Room?
They did.
Okay.
Completely, yes. They did.
So we need to vote on that?
I think we should have it in our minutes that yes, we, yes or no, we approve the use of our, of the unallocated fund balance for this project.
When, when would this take place?
After the paint, in January, so probably end of January, early February.
And what would we, what would happen with all of the materials and everything?
So the way, so the paint, the way they're doing the paint is that they're not, they're not pulling any wall shelving away, that, anything that's actually built to stay on a wall. Anything that's movable, they'll pull away, but if it's built against the wall, they're not going to paint that area, they're going to basically draw a line around it, cover up the materials, and paint around it. That's how it's affordable, honestly, because if they pulled everything out and moved everything, it would be way, 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 way more expensive. And I think we need to look at this project as kind of a interim project, because we're still hoping for that large renovation, or possibly.
It's a band-aid.
Potentially new building, you know?
Yeah, they've done this before.
Right, right, so, but it's been over 20 years.
Years ago, they took, put the addition, you know, the fireplace and all that, they put new carpeting down, painted all around.
Right.
Are they going to be painting like the small, like study rooms and stuff too?
Yes, no, no, because that's soundproof, and I don't think they can paint it. It's soundproof material, it's so paintable.
It's more of a fabric then?
I think we'd have to do another project to replace that soundproof material if we want to go in that direction, but that would be totally separate. So the plan right now is that when they do the front of the library, we're going to have to close for a few days while they do the front, but then as they do sections of the library, we'll just rope them off, and staff will run in and get whatever materials are needed, but like, there will be days when there won't be any children playing because they're painting in the children's room, and then there'll be days when you can't sit by the fireplace because they're painting, you know what I'm saying? And they think it'll take totally, total three weeks to paint, that's their estimate. The estimate for the Bremen Room was three weeks, and that was like eight weeks, so I think we just have to take everything, you know, with a grain of salt.
Carpeting will be a big.
Yes. And then we'll do the same thing with the carpeting. When they're, when they're doing the front of the building, we're going to have, we're going to have to close, there's no way for us to conduct business. But once they do the front, then we'll just rope everything off and continue the way we did. And hopefully, we'll have learned from the painting project how best to do the carpet project.
And one thing that I loved, I think this past month, it was nice, I know it wasn't any staff that was like cross-trained or anything, but it was so neat to see the Nutcracker that was a children's program be out by the fireplace. So like, even like you, like even if things are roped off, it was kind of cool, I just thought it was neat to see different areas used for different functions. I thought that was a good idea, and I don't think roping off is going to mean much.
I think, I mean, it's better than closing, right?
Yeah.
Jess, when it comes to like the kid section and the painting, or you said that section will probably be closed off, are you guys going to take into consideration are there any school days off and try to work around those?
Right, absolutely. And that's why we're waiting until January too, we don't want to do it during the holidays, we have so many kids coming in for that, so January's a little slower than December.
And the nice thing about doing the carpet, you know, last, you're kind of getting one more winter with the old carpet, so just for salt purposes.
True, that's true.
It's going to get salty anyway, but.
It's like a true parent.
That's right.
Awesome. Any questions?
Do you want us to vote, to prove that right now?
That one, I think should be in the minutes.
Yeah, so do I have a vote to, to use up to $225,000 for the carpet from the reserve fund? Jennifer first, Jennifer you second, all in favor? Perfect. And with that, we'll go on to the claims.
Yep, so I make a motion to approve vouchers in the amount of $59,993.53.
Have a motion to approve, Jennifer, Naras you second, all in favor? Perfect. And I think for the December meeting, for claims payment, we have Justin up, and then in January, Jason, we have you on deck there as well. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting? Naras you first, Jason you second, all in favor? Perfect, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much.